Coming or anybody coming?
No.
From Weers?
No, according to Ann, he wasn't going to come, he didn't need to.
It being seven o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is November eighteenth, we are in the municipal meeting room. And we have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes of October twenty first, two thousand twenty five, site walk and meeting. We have public comment, and then we have pending business. Item number one for pending business is Weers Motor Sales' site plan revision. We need to sign the plan and the notice of decision. And then under other business, we have a review of the conditional use site plan review process. And then we have North Star Planning.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Michael Neto. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of October twenty first.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty first.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Scott Curtis, seconded by Susan Roth. You weren't here.
I can second it, I just don't have to vote on it.
Oh, okay. I needed to clarify that, okay.
Okay.
Motion by Scott Curtis, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
We have one abstention, four in favor. Next item, public comment. Yes, sir.
The site walk.
Oh, thank you. The site walk, the site walk from Branch Brook Fuels.
I'll make a motion, we approve the site walk minute from October twenty first.
Second.
Was that, was that Mike or Scott?
Scott.
Scott. Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Scott Curtis, to approve the minutes of October twenty first. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstention. Now we'll go on to public comment, and since, since there's nobody from the public, we can't have any comments. Moving on to pending business, Weers Motor Sales' site plan revision. A proposal to erect a forty-four by three hundred and fifty foot solar canopy. This is a revision in the size and location of a previously approved solar canopy that the planning board approved on April second, two thousand twenty four, but was not constructed. The parcel is located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road on Tax Map thirty-three Lot Two in the DB one, DB two zone. Paul Gadboy P E is the applicant's agent. Bruce Mador is representing Weers Motors. Our purpose today is to go over the findings of fact, sign them, and the plan is available for signature. So on the findings of fact and conclusions of law, conditional use, site plan application, Weers Motors' solar canopy, fifteen thirteen Portland Road. Weers Motors has submitted a site plan application to add a forty-four by three hundred and fifty foot solar canopy, fifteen thousand four hundred square foot total, to their existing automobile dealership located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road in the downtown Business One and Two districts. Today, the site plan includes an existing showroom, buildings. Okay. She threw me off from where. Today, the site plan includes an existing showroom building, body shop, car wash, showroom facility, above ground propane tanks, and a septic leach field. The applicant received approval on February twenty first, two thousand twenty four, for a one hundred and seventy-five foot by eighty-eight foot solar panel, fifteen thousand four hundred square foot total. The site plan application before the planning board changes the location and dimensions of the previously approved solar canopy, including the location of the proposed solar canopy piers and mounted lighting fixtures. The proposed solar canopy will be served by underground DC lines and a proposed CMP transformer. At the October second, two thousand twenty five, planning board, the planning board found the application complete and voted to not hold a public hearing. Findings of fact and conclusions of law, applicant Weers Motor Sales, owner, same as the applicant, location fifteen thirteen Portland Road, zoning, downtown Business One and downtown Business Two districts. Existing land use, automobile dealership, proposed land use is an accessory structure, new canopy structure with a solar roof. Section ten point six point four one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in Sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. Findings, the proposed project conforms to all the applicable standards of the Arundel zoning ordinance, specifically the general performance standard, Section five, and the zoning standard specific to the DB one, DB two districts, Sections six point four and six point five. Remember, these are the condition uses, so we have to vote on each one.
We're taking off.
One, one admin correction in the first paragraph. It was, uh, we approved it on October twenty first, not the twenty second.
Ah, okay. Thank you. And now we need a motion on ten six four, one.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. Findings, the application was submitted to DEP February third, two thousand twenty five, for exemption from site location. The applicant will be required to comply with state rules for interconnection where applicable. No other state or federal permits have been submitted as part of this application.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Was that you, Scott?
That's me.
Oh, okay. Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Mike Neto, to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. Finding, the applicant received review, review from the Arundel Fire Department. The fire chief has no additional needs as noted in the letter dated September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five.
Move to approve.
I get it.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green, to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Finding, the proposed development is not anticipated to increase peak runoff from the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michael Neto, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. The proposed development will not have an adverse onsite or offsite impact for vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Michael Neto, to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood's surrounding environments or the community. Findings, the proposed development will not have an adverse impact upon the environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood's surrounding environments or the community.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott Curtis, seconded by Paul Green, to approve.
Mike.
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 Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw Scott.
Right.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. The proposed development will not produce anything that will adversely impact the quality of life of the surrounding parcels.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Michael Neto, to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. Findings, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government, excuse me.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Michael Neto, for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number ten, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The, the proposed application is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Michael Neto, for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Approval, on the basis of the application, plans, reports, and above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the proposed site plan application of Weers Motor Sales' solar canopy at fifteen thirteen Portland Road. We need, we need a motion. Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Michael Neto, to approve the application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. I will sign this, and we can, I'll send it down the road.
Okay.
We, we need two of these, don't we?
You have one.
Oh, no, I have two of them over here.
Oh, okay.
You want to use this one?
No.
You got it?
Yeah. And I put two of them on the, on the table when I came in. Just for the, for the sake of the two new members, when we have anything that is a conditional use, we vote on every aspect of six, five, four. We have had a couple of, we've had one major incident where somebody failed one of those points, and if you fail any of those points, you fail the entire process. We don't do it, we only do it on conditional use applications.
And we will, we need to sign the plans, we're going to go.
Yep. Thank you very much. And now for the last piece of info, well, no, it's not the last, we've got the review first. Uh, conditional use site plan application revision, Anne found this, evidently it was part of our process back in, in two thousand, two thousand and ten era. We're not, she wasn't exactly sure as to what, what the dates on it were, uh, but she found it in one of the files, and we, we currently have nothing in the application or in the zoning ordinance that allows for a revision. And I asked her to take a look at it, and she came up with this conditional use site plan revision. I think it would be a good idea for us to go through and do something like this so that we, we present, we prevent the issue we had with Weers Motors. Because that was a revision to an existing site plan and that we had approved, they had to go through the entire process again.
Well, we, last two, right, Branch Brook was the same thing.
Branch Brook was the same way. You know, so we, if, if we can expedite that somehow. I'm, I looked at it and go, if it's a minor revision, this was essentially a minor revision. The building was looking this way, and they said, no, we want the building to go this way. Same square footage involved.
Yep.
I think it's sad that they had to come back through the process for us.
Agreed.
I agree.
But if, if we have something that we can expedite that process with, uh, that would help to prevent them from having to, to come back before us.
So can you make it somewhat discretionary?
We can, but we have to have a basis and a set of plans, or in this case, conditional use, that says this is, this is what you have to do, because this is going to include, it's got a checklist in here, it's got the permit application itself. And that's essentially what it has, you know?
I think.
What is it that you want to do? And is it going to impact anything?
Yeah, like the, the checklist itself would be really the same. And so it's hard to do different checklists for things because any, like amendments are very different in scale, like some of them can be very small, like we saw with the Weers Motors canopy, others can be very big, like with Raptor Falls. They were an amendment, they did, you know, they had a new parking facility, they had a lot more stormwater impact. But the, the procedures, the one, the document that was, that I sent over has more like specific guidance on process, so like for, there's like amended site plans, and then there's minor changes to approved plans, which can get approved by codes and the planner. And then there's a process for amendments, which would follow a similar process as a site plan or conditional use review, but you know, it would depend on, like the board could decide whether or not to hold a public hearing, depending on how big the project is. So that's, it's common in, in certain towns that they have that language in there that says, you know, things like public hearings are optional, but it basically follows the same process as a site plan.
But I'm, and, and I may be wrong, but I'm looking at it because these are basically going to be de minimis changes. I don't want a white building, I want a green one. Something that's really not going to have a big impact on, on the plans that we've already approved so that we could, we could make it simplified. Yes, the, the checklist would always be the same forever, no matter what you're doing. You know, you've got to go through the process, but in, in a de minimis change, most of these would not be applicable.
Yeah, like a de minimis change wouldn't need to go back to the planning board. Like, that's why there's language in there that says, you know, if you're moving your, your dumpster five feet, or you're not going to have an impact on your site, you know, the planner or the code officer could just sign off of, on that plan.
Right.
And it wouldn't need to go back to do a whole review.
Right, that's, that's the kind of thing that I would envision a de minimis change would make, something that does not require them to come see us again, and to jump through all of the hoops and the applications and the notifications and everything else that goes along with it.
Hey, Sam, do you have an example of, of what some of that language is like from the other towns that we can use as a template or a jumping point?
It's in the, uh, that, um, that one pager that I sent over in your packets. Um, it's, it's pretty simple, it just says, you know, like, here's a process for an amended site plan that would get plenty more review, and here's a process for like what's classified as like a de minimis change or minor changes to approved plans. And then there's also, I believe, a sentence on the next page that says, um, um, something like, depending on the scope of the review, public hearings for amended site plans shall be optional. And I think that allows things like, uh, what we saw with Branch Brook Fuels to maybe get, get through in one meeting and to not have the public hearings, so.
You sent that to us? Yeah.
I sent it to Anne.
Oh, this is the one?
Yeah.
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 I thought that was the one for me.
And is there usually a sunset date, Sam? So between, uh, the initial application and the request for an amendment?
Is there a what date?
A sunset date. So in other words, if you uh, get the plan approved in two thousand twenty four and you don't come back until two thousand twenty nine to make an amendment, does it have to, should there be a, a time limit on how long it takes between the initial application and the request for an amendment?
Um, typically, there's not a timeline on that, I mean, there's, uh, your approval expires after one year, but the amendment would be a different review, so it, it would really depend on the project, like I think in some projects, the board has said, you know, I think with Bentley's, like they have to come back every year so to renew their permit, and any amendments have to come back within this timeframe, but typically, it's not like on most projects, there isn't a timeframe on it. They could come back whenever to do an amendment.
Well, just when, when it comes to Bentley's, because he's got the campground, and he's, he's expanding the whole thing out, and he knew he was not going to get it done within the particular timeframe that it was required, so we gave him three or four, uh, I can't think of the term. But he, he was going to be doing a section at a time.
Yeah, but there have been like plenty of, I mean, even, I mean, we're talking site plan, but even with amended subdivisions, there have been subdivisions that were approved, you know, way back when, and then people are coming into amend lot lines and, you know.
There's, well, there's, there's, there's one down on Proctor Road that was approved and was never, it's all laid out. It just, they never put the road in.
Is that the one they tried to like sell as a package, like a ready to dig package?
Yeah.
So that was going to be like the subdivision. This is going to be a path for some providers to be like, oh, we put the house in the wrong spot. Oops, and now we can go and do an amendment plan?
Well, it would depend, if you put the house in the wrong spot, if you put the house in the wetlands, you're going to have to fix the house.
Okay.
But if.
Not always.
Yeah, yeah, let's not go down that route. They, they are, they are perfect examples.
Adding a tank, that's an amendment to his plan. Same basic plan, adding one tank.
Right.
Uh, that would be an amendment. Whereas Weers is coming in and saying, hey, I want to change the direction of my solar panel from this side to this side.
Right, that's a revision.
We shouldn't saw that, well, they could have been handed by staff, and it would have been fine.
Well, if, if, if we go through and we put in, uh, ten point one point four, minor change to approved plan, that, that would cover it under, under site plan review or the town planner, and it would not have to come before us.
If. Be approved either by the town plan or a code officer.
And I, I, I think the first part, ten point one point three, amendment to approved plans, those still have to come to us.
No, it's, but it says the town planner should be responsible for determining whether or not a site plan qualifies as an amended site plan.
Right.
And then it would have to come to us.
Whether it's amended or it's minor.
Right.
It's amended, then it comes to the board, but they may not have to go through the whole gamut of, uh, public hearing.
That's correct.
I mean, that, that's crazy.
Yeah, what, what we had to do in this last instance is just like, it, it shouldn't have been, I understand why we did it, because there's no option within the ordinance not to do it.
And I, I think it also relates back to the fee book, too.
Yeah, it does.
For Branch Brook.
One of my plans.
Yeah.
So. No, I think, I think we should clarify some of it, and then the application, so. Oh, I look at you, Sam, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, language is pretty similar to a lot of towns that have amended site plan provisions in their ordinance. Um, I mean, it's really to just make the process a little bit easier and, um, and kind of leave it up to the board's discretion on, you know, depending on the scope of the project, kind of what the review could look like.
A lot of it, and in Nick's case, if they were filling this out, they could probably check that does not apply.
Uh, yeah, that's true, I mean, they could, you know, it's hard to, like I said, change the checklist for every project, because projects are all very different, but, you know, they could go through that whole checklist, and half the stuff might not apply, and that would be, you know, fine, it would be dependent on their project.
And then, you know, if, if it's a de minimis issue, either the town planner or the codes enforcement officer can address.
Right.
What do you need to do for that? If it's an amendment, they're going to have to come and see us.
Well, come see us, but a lot of the stuff on the site plan checklist would be dozen of why.
It could very well be, yeah.
Or refer to the original plan.
Yeah.
Like, who went back to Branch Brook at, for example?
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, do you want like another checkbox that says like, no change requested?
Or no change, or?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, maybe, I think. I think, yeah, I think for the amended site plan, no change would be inappropriate.
Changes, federal.
Yeah.
Better language.
But then we would, we would want to be changing the entire checklist, because we want to give the same checklist to everybody.
Right, well, I think that's changeable.
Yeah, I think you give the same checklist to everybody.
We just add in one more column that says no change.
Right.
From over to the bottom, it says for amended site plan, if it does not apply, issue a comment, tell me what.
We could do that.
Right. So, uh, the whole, uh, training duty, for example, touching any of the groundwork, no groundwork being performed, period.
Yeah.
The goal is to make it easier, not harder.
Right.
Does it put too much weight on the town planner to determine whether a site plan qualifies as an amended site plan?
Yes.
You.
Well, they, they may come in, uh,
So.
We, Weers Motors came in with an amended site plan. He didn't need to, he, we, if, if this had gone through the town planner, Sam could have looked at that and said, this is a de minimis change. We don't need to go through that process.
And this often been allowed.
Right, right, but I, 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 I guess, but does it put too much weight, like, what if there was a, not a clear cut yes or no? The tip, would, is it still acceptable for the town planner to be solely responsible?
If it's, if it's not a clear cut yes or no, then it's a no, and you'll have to go to the planning board.
It's usually, it, it would usually be pretty clear cut, I think the decision of, you know, the town, it's like the town planner's decision is more of like, whether it goes to the board, or whether it goes, or whether it can go through a staff review committee and just get reviewed by staff, or whether it's just a, you know, code looks at it, and I look at it, and we sign off on the plan and don't have any meetings, because it's a de minimis change.
You made a decision, Mel, for everyone to come see.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty much saying, okay, here's this minor change that we could not exercise on, on anybody else, but going forward, we will have it in our bag of tricks, and we can pull it out and say, hey, you know, and, and there may be something at some point, uh, they may want to come to us in, at the very beginning and say, do I have to go through all of these hoops? And we can say, you know, right here, it's a minor change. And we could make the decision and then send them away, and that would save them all of the public aggravation and, and the, well, not aggravation, but the public hearing and the preparation of, of a large set of plans and the delay.
Yeah, it's the delay.
We, we could work, we could work it through that way. But that would be up to the applicant, he can go to, they can go to Sam and say, we want to do it this way, and Sam can look at it and say, no, you have to go to the planning board. And, and being the, the, uh, fine and wonderful people that we are, we could look at it and say, yeah, we want to see it all. Jump through these hoops, but in all probability, we'd be going, uh, no. We'll, we'll, we'll side with the town planner. Ninety-nine out of a hundred.
And they're going to have their own fees amended and minor? A new fee structure for each of those?
We don't have anything to do with the fee structure, that's all that's selectmen.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay.
Which, which is a wonderful situation, I love it.
Gotcha.
There already is.
Yeah.
Although it was a little convoluted for Branch Brook, because he didn't, he paid the fees, he didn't know which fees, and
Yeah.
You know, it was.
That's what got this all wrong.
That's right.
That was part of it.
Yeah. So I think these are good changes, actually, suggestions. So do we need to vote whether or not we adopt them, or?
Have to have a public hearing.
Well, yeah, we're going to have to have a public hearing.
We're going to have, we, we need to make the motion, have the public hearing. We're gonna have, we, we need to make the motion to have a public hearing and have a public hearing or we could vote to adopt and pause to the majority.
Yep.
All right. Should someone make a motion?
Well, why don't you?
Uh, I move that we hold a public hearing regarding the adoption of these, this new language to the conditional use application.
Specifically, you're talking about 10.13 and 10.14. The amendment to approved plans and the minor changes to approved plans.
And 10.3.
And 10.10.63. Three. Yeah.
10.6.3. Number three.
Yep. A public hearing for an amended site plan conditional use application shall be optional depending upon the scope of the review.
Right.
Just one more question. I'm, I might just be blurring the lines here, but when it sounds like a, I'm just thinking of going down the subdivision path again. When a subdivision, when the subdivider says, oops, I put the house in the wrong spot. I want to change boundaries. Let's say they don't impact wetlands. There's none of that. Did, who, they go before the select board?
If they put the house in the wrong spot, yes, they're going to have to go to the select board.
Wouldn't the, a select board then be approving essentially a minor change to an approved plan?
But that's not a minor change. If they want to change boundaries or they want to, uh, you know, reposition the house on the lot, that is not a minor change.
Okay. I guess I can see it's a sub, I would, I mean, putting myself in the subdivider shoes, I, I would, me, if I said, oh, I want to move the, this boundary 10 feet. Because I put the house 10 feet to the west.
And, and that's, see, but that's where.
So many other questions.
That, that's, that's where the problem becomes. You put the house in the wrong spot. If you were to come before you put the house in and say, I want to move the lot 10 feet to the west, that may or may not be a minor change depending upon does somebody else own part of that land? What's that entire situation? It gets a little complex. But if you were to ask before you put the house on, okay, once that house is in place, you need to move the house and put it in the right spot.
Right. Is, is it, is it worth putting something like in these, like that, that says this process cannot be used to retroactively fix a discrepancy? Like oops, I put the house in the wrong spot. Now I'm coming before you to say, oh, I want a minor change to my approved plan. And then we say, why are you, why are you saying, coming before us for a minor change to approved plan? They say, oh, because I put the house in the wrong spot.
But why would you open that door?
They're not, they're not the people that are going to be making that.
I mean.
That's a violation of the building protocol. And then at that point, you're talking about a zoning change.
Well, if, if, if you put it in the.
The barrier.
Right. If you put it in the wrong place, codes enforcement officer, it will tell you that's the wrong spot.
Look at it from the foundation, getting ready to be poured. Yeah, yeah, I find the issue that. There was, we had an issue this recently on, on one of the houses we looked at, that was pretty, to buy the house and wanted to also put a business there and found out it was the guy that owned it now built it too close to the land. He wasn't on somebody else's land here, but he violated the setback and he ended up having to go to the select board and the barrier was only to get a barrier.
We have a motion on the table, right?
Yes, we do.
It was.
Why didn't you say?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. We have a second.
Yeah.
Now discussion?
That's what we, no, we had a second. Yeah. That was the whole discussion.
Okay. No, well, so.
Is there a date for the public hearings so I can inform?
Did you want your discussion now?
Yeah, yeah, okay. I was waiting for someone to take a discussion before I could have a discussion.
Okay.
Uh, we mentioned the specific paragraph numbers. I'm not sure those paragraph numbers align to our land use ordinance.
They'll, now there's a classic example of a de minimis change. It's not in line, just changes.
But in, in the motion, it was motion specific to a, to the paragraph number. The paragraph numbers don't fit right. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
Okay.
10.1, 10.12.
Fed into this doc.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, let me look it up right now. You got the municipal credit?
Page 172 and 173, if you look up the pages.
I'm just looking at the changes on the page.
The page numbers are, yeah, don't match the, or those can get, are you saying, because it's?
No, I'm just saying where that section is that it would go into. Get trying to look at it.
Uh, yeah.
I think it would be 10.3.
It should be 10.31, right? Or 10.3.
Or the.
10.1.
10.31.
10.1 is just purpose. So there's no 10.1.
Right.
10.1.3.
10.3 is a classification of projects. Administrative site slash conditional use review is 10.31. And then it's sub paragraphs one through five.
Well, I think it would be 10.321 or 10.3 3 and 10.34.
Yeah, what is listed as 10.63 on here is 10.32 in our ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, yeah, it would go under 10.6. So that's just a minor, yeah, I could make that correction.
Are we good?
Okay, yeah. We can, we can get that cleaned up in time for the public hearing so that we have the exact.
Oh, okay. 10.6 is the, the actual use review procedures?
Yep.
Right?
Uh huh.
Where does it talk?
It was just taken out of the, that ordinance and it will, if it gets approved at town meeting, it will get incorporated to the base. Yeah.
We had a.
Yeah. Yeah.
A motion and we had a second, this discussion. I just want to make sure everybody recognizes. That they do have to get fed in there in certain paragraph places.
And that's an issue in, throughout the document that, that things don't necessarily come on.
These numbers don't, don't line up.
You need like a Henneman collator to put all the pages together. So you can see where the discrepancies.
Having read through it.
In language.
Having read through it and trying to get prepared for taking this position, I reckon, how messed up it is.
Yeah.
I just want to take the opportunity to fix it when we get a chance to fix it.
Yeah, totally agree.
All right.
Are we all set?
We are. Correct vote?
We, well, yes, we, we need to vote. Let's, uh, when would you like to do? The public hearing?
After the holidays?
In January.
Yeah.
We can do it. Well, while we're here, that does bring up an interesting situation related to January. No, January 6th is our first meeting, so it doesn't.
So December meetings will be the same, will be not conflicted Christmas meetings?
I'm not sure I understood that question.
We're gonna have two, two meetings in December, just like normal? There, there's no conflict of Christmas or anything like that?
At, no, at, at this point, we have nothing going forward for the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and if, if, there's a, there's another week, I believe, before that, so that if nothing comes in. Yeah.
Right now, the schedule is December 2nd, December 16th.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if some, and, and, yeah, I wanted to discuss that. It could, because if nothing, put this off until after the first of the year. If nothing comes in on December 2nd and nothing, there will be nothing going forward to December 16th, we can probably get the month off.
Recompend. Repulsion, but I will recommend, you don't do it at the first one after the holidays because we can get back and.
Okay. So then it would be January 20th.
I think the 20th is for it.
The 20th is good? Okay.
Was that, is that a new motion?
I move that we, uh, set the date of January 20th for a public hearing.
Okay.
On the adoption of these amendment changes to the conditional use.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Mike?
Scott.
No, that's who's got.
Oh, geez.
Mike and I will work after meeting on changing the.
Yeah. Okay.
Voices.
Yeah.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Scott Curtis to have have a public hearing on January 20th to go over the changes to the site plan conditional use review amendment regulations. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Which then leads us to the last piece of business that we have. Sam is going away. She has taken a job working for the town of Arundel and she will not be around after tonight.
Really?
Not for the town of Arundel, for, for Auburn.
No.
I don't know if you did.
Auburn. The Auburn, Arundel, Bedford, Sanford, what's the difference? I just insulted all of the people in Bedford and Sanford.
Well, good luck with your news.
Yes, good luck.
Good job.
Are you going to be town planner? Or what, what is your, do you mind sharing what your new role is going to be?
Um, I'll be doing, um, yeah, a lot of what I do here, um, some ordinance work, some development, a lot of development review, helping a little bit with the, the comp plan.
Okay.
Yep.
That's more fun than this. So.
I don't know.
Don't answer that question, Sam.
Not gonna answer it. It's been good though.
Well, you say.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if you have any, uh, so for right now, Ben, he, he just hired two new people who will start in December, but any questions can go through him. Um, and as those people get more up to speed, the, the company will have more capacity to, you know, handle planning board meetings. And going forward, um, I'm not sure if somebody will be there once a week as like I am, but I think um, for, for the short term, um, any kind of big projects or, you know, big questions that come up, um, can go through Ben. He can answer that. He's available for call or email. Um, but we're getting new staff and they'll have more capacity to, to hopefully handle, um, handle the projects and handle planning board meetings.
So, so the town of Arundel's plan is to stick with North Star planning, I assume?
At the, at this point, what, what happens going forward? Because it's not, it's not up to us.
Right.
The town manager and the selectman will make a decision at some point. You know, I, I had expressed to, to the town manager, I would like to see us have a part-time planner, even if it's only two days a week. You know, I think having the part-time planner would serve the town better.
I concur.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, we're all done.